...for residents, business, and the environment propel them to act and quickly secure replacement trees.
Over the weekend, downtown L.A. suffered from an unconscionable act: a vandalism when someone cut down several trees in the public right of way. For many of our downtown L.A. residents, the public right of way is their front yard, it is their backyard, so the loss of these trees is personal.
I moved here about 20 years ago under the "Live, Work, Play in Downtown L.A." So I'm very invested here. And like Councilwoman said, this is our backyard. And to have someone come in and try to undo the progress that we have done is just infuriating.
Our downtown L.A. stakeholders notified us about what was happening in our district, and our city family got quick to work. The urban forestry division quickly cleaned the sites, and the Bureau of Street Services started looking for replacement options, and LAPD caught the perpetrator. But today, I'm pleased to announce that the Bureau of Street Services has committed to replacing the cut-down trees. Thanks to the generosity of various community organizations and community members that have reached out, we're replacing the trees, two to one.
We really want to thank the residents of downtown L.A. for being our eyes and ears and letting us know what happened, and we encourage you to continue to do that. Report any kind of tree violations through our MyLA311 service request.
Well, downtown is alive and well. We want you to come downtown. It's very opening, very welcoming, very inclusive, and we're going to continue to advocate, and we're going to have our trees restored, so it won't feel like a heat desert. You know, we will have the benefits of having mature trees, so I'm excited about that. And thanks to Councilwoman for that.
In honor of Earth Day, Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez worked with the Office of Community Beautification and the L.A. City Department of Transportation to enable a cleaner, greener, and safer Pacoima.
Today, we're here at Pacoima City Hall celebrating Earth Day because it's incredibly important that we collaborate with our community to help rebuild our tree canopy. We're giving away 100 free trees in partnership with the L.A. Beautification Team.
So today, we are here with the City Council Office. We're here to give free trees away for those people with homes. They will be able to plant those trees in their yard, so they can provide shade for them in the future. We're in a really hot area here. It's the valley, so it gets pretty hot, and obviously, these trees will help shade your home and save yourself some electricity.
I did get an amazing pink tree, and from the people that were here helping me out every, like, today, they told me that it was a highly recommended tree, so I'm just hoping it blossoms and looks beautiful during the summer.
Today, we're also featuring our new Dash Bus, which is going to be put into operation here in Pacoima. What's important about a Dash system is that it's a hyper-local solution for transportation needs that the community desperately needs, because so often, our public transit doesn't also meet the locations that are most often frequented by our community members. The stops were informed by the community, and this is a fully electric system. It's affordable, it's clean, and it's hyper-local, and I'm proud that this is going to be the second Dash Bus system I've introduced to the district since I've been in office.
We're so excited to be here and offer this amazing resources to the community. We're here with Metro, the Life Program, as well as Elida, Dash. So the Dash has the services right now, especially with the Life Program. They give you 90 days unlimited on the bus and 20 free rides every month for life. So the Dash is very good to get it right now, especially because we don't want people driving as many cars right now, especially with everything polluting the air, so it's very good to take the Dash.
It's incredibly important for our community to be part of how we green and maintain our communities. This is not something that the City of Los Angeles will ever be able to accomplish alone, and that's why together, we need to exercise how we're going to make our communities greener, cleaner, and safer for all Angelinos.
Appreciating the planet can start at a local park. Council President Marquise Harris-Dawson was at Harvard Park to celebrate Earth Day and plant the idea of greater community engagement year-round.
We are here at beautiful Harvard Park to celebrate the Seeds of Unity Festival, which marks Earth Day here in Los Angeles and around the world. This is the second year in a row that Scope has stepped up to sponsor this event. It's a big deal to us. We want organizations to come, populate the park, invite the neighborhood in, do some education, some resources, and a whole lot of fun, and that's what's happening here today at Harvard Park.
The point of coming together in this community is to celebrate our work and our advocacy for environmental justice here in South L.A. The reason we do that is because we are disproportionately affected by the environmental injustices that plague this community. The earth is our home, and to the young people, I would just say, anything that you can do to clean your home, to advocate for your home, it takes nothing to do so. You can start by cleaning up in your neighborhood. You can start by organizing in your neighborhood. Come down to Scope, communicate with your City Council President, Marquise Harris-Dawson, let him know what's important to you and how you want to show up here for your community and for your earth.
These events are so important to our public safety. Getting people in the park, doing everyday things, having visibility, connecting with their neighbors, that is really, to me, the root of safety, and that's the public part of public safety, in addition to what we're doing for the environment, in addition to what we're doing for young people, in addition to what we're doing for health and physical activity, and all the resources that are being given out.
The City of Los Angeles Emergency Management Department has opened applications for its 2025 Camp Ready L.A. program. Now in its third year, the program is for late high school, early college students who are interested in city service and first response, or who've been impacted by a disaster. Camp participants will learn practical skills for many types of emergencies over the four-day program, taking place from July 22nd to July 25th at L.A. City's Emergency Operations Center. Participants will build connections with other campers and emergency management experts while developing their own community leadership skills. Young Angelinos aged 18 to 24 can apply for the 2025 Camp Ready L.A. program beginning May 1st. For more information, visit emergency.lacity.gov/readyla. The Los Angeles Police Department Commercial Crimes Division announced the arrest of two people and the recovery of millions of dollars' worth of goods by the cargo theft unit. At storage unit facilities in the San Fernando Valley, detectives recovered over $1.2 million in stolen goods, which included tequila, speakers, clothing, and pet food. A stolen shipment of Bitcoin mining computers valued at $2.7 million was recovered at Los Angeles International Airport just as the computers were about to be loaded onto a flight to Hong Kong. The two arrests followed an extensive investigation in collaboration with Los Angeles Port Police, Union Pacific Police, and the Los Angeles World Airport Police. For more information, visit lapdonline.org. Los Angeles World Airport's LAWA has recognized the winners of the 2024 Friendly Flyer Award Program at Van Nuys Airport. The Friendly Flyer Award Program was established in 2012 and is part of Van Nuys Airport's overall outreach and sustainability efforts. Award winners must have no violations of LAWA's noise abatement and curfew regulation and be in observance of the Quieter Nights Program, avoiding flights between 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. Among the 26 award winners for 2024 are 22 repeat winners and four first-time winners, including ATI Jet, MC Group, OKVS, and Ventura Air Services. According to LAWA, the Friendly Flyer Award winners reduced their nighttime jet operations by 21% year-over-year, benefiting the surrounding communities. For more information, visit lawa.org/news-releases.
Picture this: the historic part of downtown on a Saturday. The streets are crowded with long lines of people, and animals too. Dogs, cats, birds, and iguana. It can only be the blessing of the animals.
We are at El Pueblo de Los Angeles on Olvera Street, celebrating the blessing of the animals. It's every Saturday right before Easter. It's such a beautiful day for all the families to come together. This is my first time doing this at El Pueblo. I've never seen so many animals: dogs, cats, doves, turtles. It's not only imperative that we take care of our constituents and our human beings, but also our four-legged loved ones and our reptiles, too.
This tradition goes back to the early founding of Los Angeles. That's when a lot of the farmers here in and around Los Angeles in the 18th and 19th century would have their cattle blessed by the church, here by the Placita Church. So in the 1930s, the Olvera Street merchants resurrected this tradition, but instead of cattle and cows, now we have our beloved dogs and cats and all the animals that we cherish every day. So this is a free and open event, available to everybody of all faiths and backgrounds, but we have the Archbishop of the Catholic Archdiocese that blesses the animals here, and so we have all kinds of animals. We don't really discriminate against any animal, so long as you love that animal and you bring it with you, it deserves a blessing just like everybody else. And usually, the animals are always well-behaved. You know, I think they know that this is a important, holy day for them, so they all are kind of in their Sunday best, well-dressed, and they're here to really receive a blessing to hopefully have a good year for them. What's also really touching is that people also bring photos of their deceased animals, and they also bring ashes of their animals. So again, this is all-inclusive and all-encompassing as possible in celebration of our animal friends.
Today, we have represented the zoo. Obviously, lots of animals at the zoo who need blessings. We also have the Department of Animal Services. Animal Services is in charge of assuring safety and helping animals find homes, and we're offering free microchipping today. We saw during the fires that animals can get separated from their families, and without a microchip, we don't know how to get them back, because they can't tell us. So it's absolutely critical, people microchip their animals and register the chip so that we know how to reunite you with your family member.
...says that we remain in hope, even though there are challenges in our society. Hope and unity and the respect for the creation make us to walk forward. We respect this beautiful tradition, and we take the opportunity to be in contact with all the families and feel that also that the family have respect for animals.
It's what God says, Jesus loves his little children. And it means, to me, that means my birds, and they get blessed every year. I feel that they have accomplished one of the biggest events of the year, and it's amazing. So if you haven't done it this year, I recommend you come next year and bring all your animals.
Move your feet to a beat that probably comes from the Congo. You might not know that's where it hails from, but you can hear more at Congo Sonic, which is part of the African-American Composer Series.
Today, we are opening the exhibition Congo Sonic: Bantu Beats Across the Americas. It's our 17th annual African-American Composer Series, and this is such an important time to do that. As Black composers get shut down throughout the nation, we are excited to keep featuring African-American composers here. This year, we decided to focus on how important the Democratic Republic of Congo and Greater Congo and the Bantu expansion have been to the music that we listen to, we dance to, we feel, and we live with every day in the Americas.
Just try to tell American, like, African music is, no, we don't sing just because we love to sing. All African music is like a story, so when I'm singing something, it's some story. I'm just a little bit excited, and I just call all American people who love culture, love, know and know the culture. They can come, and it's going to be okay for everybody.
I've been collecting African Aladdin music for about 20, 25 years. I donated some of the album covers and information for today's exhibit, honoring the legacy of African-American composers that have been such a huge influence and part of all of the music on these records here and part of the music that I love.
With you guys to DJ, and I think I like doing it because I like to experience the music with the people. Music has always been a strong influence and important aspect of my life. It keeps me motivated, it keeps me happy, and I like to share that experience with people, and I also like to take people on a journey with the music that I play. You know, I want to be part of this conversation to address the issues that's going on in the Congo and how their music has influenced different types of music throughout the world.
What the country of Congo is giving to America is a lot of roots. Its roots are here, the diaspora of African music, African culture, African art, all of it, which is intertwined, has become a big part of Latin America, of the United States, and often, it's been marginalized. Often, it's been erased of that history, and having shows like this and having to be able to connect it to the current music or music in the past century allows folks in our community and abroad to be able to see and make those connections to center the influences that the Congo and Africa and indigenous people from around the world have had in making music today.
While it's small in size, this Westlake Park has substantial outreach. Now that spring is here, the recently renovated Hope and Peace Park hosted a bustling community celebration. Today, we're here at Hope and Peace Park in the Westlake neighborhood, having our spring celebration with some of our partners such as Levitt L.A. and the Love vs. Hate Campaign, to come give some resources and some good times to our community for the spring and Easter.
So today, we are helping Council District 1 with their Spring Egg Hunt event. They went ahead and invited all our local organizations and partnerships to bring this beautiful event to our newly renovated Hope and Peace Park with our new playground. We had an egg hunt, tacos that were graciously sponsored by Healing Urban Barrios. We have LA Commons here doing an arts and crafts project, and other community members and organizations. We're very fortunate today to have this beautiful weather, where families were able to come and enjoy the sunshine, hang out on the grass, picnic with us, and just enjoy our springtime activities.
So Hope and Peace Park is the front yard and backyard for many of our community members. It's one of the densest areas of the county and the city of L.A. It's important that we have these opportunities for our families, especially the ones that rely so much on our green space, our publicly-owned green space for activities for their families. In this week's feature story, Carolyn Hull is the General Manager of the City's Economic and Workforce Development Department. She tells our and police about job supports, business training, and the matching services the department supplies across the city.
Joining us today, we welcome Carolyn Hull. She is the General Manager of the Economic and Workforce Development Department, or the EWDD. We're so glad to have you with us, Carolyn.
It's great to be here. Thank you for inviting me.
Yes, glad to have you. Give us an overview of what the EWDD does.
The Economic and Workforce Development Department develops, delivers, and promotes programs and initiatives that support small businesses, that support youth development. We also have a real estate division that actually activates underutilized land so that we can provide revenue to the general fund, and we have a nationally-recognized workforce development division that provides job training. We provide access to capital. We support incubators, because really, our goal is to provide the residents with an opportunity to have a sustainable and living wage.
Talk a little bit more about the Worksource Center. What exactly is that?
Oh, the Worksource Center, it's a matching service for job seekers and employers. If you're a job seeker, you can go into one of our 17 Worksource Centers, and you can get assistance with your building your resume, get assistance with doing mock interviews, job placement, understanding what training you're going to need, and it's all free. And if you're an employer and you're seeking employees, you can come to the Worksource Center and talk about the skills that you're looking for, and if that skill set is not easily attainable, we can work with the job seekers and actually subsidize their training.
Let's talk a little bit about the JEDI Zone. First of all, terrific name, so clever. J E D I stands for Jobs and Economic Development Incentive Zone, correct?
That's right.
That's correct. I had to check my work. What happens in, what is a JEDI Zone? What happens there?
What we found is that so many of our main streets are so vital to what makes L.A. L.A. for all of us, and so many of those main streets and communities need support for their small businesses. So what we did is we looked at communities and areas that were underserved, were challenged with high vacancy rates for their stores, and quite frankly, just needed a refurbishment and revitalization. So instead of looking at the city as a whole, what we did is try to concentrate resources into those areas that, so that they'd be, it'd be most impactful.
Okay. Let's talk a little bit about the youth and adult job fairs.
We are gearing up for our summer youth employment right now, and during the summer months, those are the big months for when we try to get our youth employed and into internships. I would encourage our youth to go to our social media page and to keep posted on the events that we are hosting. This is job fair season, so please stay connected with us on social media.
When someone plans on going to a job fair, especially a young adult who may not have a lot of guidance in their life, should they go prepared to do an interview on the spot?
They should. They should come prepared to be interviewed on the spot. We try to make it as easygoing as possible. So they shouldn't worry about going and buying a suit. Just come as you are.
Exactly. I love it. Okay. Any other partnerships and collaborations with EWDD that you guys have over there that you'd like to speak more about?
Well, EWDD is working really closely with the mayor's office to develop strategies around the next five years of our workforce system and looking at those industries that are going to be the job generators for the next 20, 25 years. Stay tuned.
You guys are on Instagram, you're on Twitter, you're on LinkedIn, all the information that anybody could need about the services you folks offer over there is there.
Absolutely.
L.A. City's Department of Recreation and Parks invites you to a nature hike with their urban ecologist through Ken Malloy Harbor Regional Park. Urban Ecologist Ryan Kinzel will be guiding participants through the unique habitat of this harbor-city park. The park's Machado Lake is part of SoCal's natural water habitat and home to over 300 species of migratory birds. Enjoy the sights and sounds of native animals and plants at Ken Malloy Harbor Regional Park. Wear comfortable shoes and bring water for this nature hike with Urban Ecologist on Saturday, May 10th at 8:00 a.m. Learn more under the Events tab at laparks.org. Saturday, May 10th, is Board Game Day at the Downtown Central Library. Bring your favorite board game and connect with community members at this monthly meetup, which welcomes new and experienced players. Don't worry if you don't have a game. Join a gaming group as it forms, or borrow a game from the library's welcome table in the rotunda. Whether you bluff, strategize, or simply want to roll the dice, join L.A.'s Public Library at the Central Library for Board Game Day on Saturday, May 10th at 12:00 p.m. Learn more at lapl.org/events. Mother's Day is coming, and Green Meadows Recreation Center presents its Mother's Day Brunch on Saturday, May 10th. L.A. City's Department of Recreation and Parks and Council Member Corinne Price are making sure that moms get the honors they deserve at this annual community luncheon. The event will have music, food, entertainment, and an opportunity to celebrate and thank moms and mother figures. The Green Meadows Mother's Day Brunch takes place on Saturday, May 10th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For more information, see the calendar at cd9.lacity.gov. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Natalia Bilbao, and from all of us here in L.A. this week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org, and we're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more. L.A. is here.
Did you know the average LA resident uses about 89 gallons of water each day? Challenge yourself to conserve. Turning off the faucet when you brush saves up to 10 gallons of water. Taking a five-minute or less shower saves up to 15 gallons of water. Washing only full loads of laundry saves up to 30 gallons of water. And fixing a running toilet can save up to 50 gallons of water. Keep it in mind all day, every day. It's water conservation the LA way.
Test, test, test. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, the sixth day of May in the year 2025. My name is Mark Lee Harris-Dosson. I serve as president of this council. Public comment will be taken in person in this chamber for today's meeting. Let's begin our proceedings by calling the robe. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Bloomingfield, Harris-Dosson, Hernandez, Hutt, Gerardo, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Hart, Price, Roman, Rodriguez, Soto, Martinez, Jaroslawski, 11 members present and in court, Mr. President.
All right. Our first order of business?
Approval of the minutes of May 2nd, 2025.
All right. Councilmember Lee moves. Councilmember Rodriguez seconds. What's next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Nazarian moves. Councilmember Padilla seconds. What's next?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday. It's time for the flag salute.
All right. I'll ask everyone in the chamber to rise, face the flag, and join Councilmember Lee in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Y'all face... Please stand up, face our nation's flag, put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can we run through the agenda, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Items 1 through 31 are items noted for public hearing. The Los Angeles Department of Building and Safety recommends to confirm the liens for items 1, 3, 5, 6, 8 through 12, 15 through 18... Oh, I'm sorry. 15 through 17 and 22. Again, Building and Safety requests confirmation for the liens for 1, 3, 5, 6, 8 through 12, 15 through 17, and 22. The department also recommends to receive and file the lien for item 7 inasmuch as the lien has been paid. The department recommends to continue for two weeks to May 20th, 2025, the following items. Those would be items 2, 4, 13, 14, 19 through 21, and those are continued to May 2025. Also, the department requests continuing item 18 to June 6, 2025. Items 32 through 37 are items which public hearings have been held. Items 38 through 44 are items which public hearings have not been held. Items 45 and 46 are closed session items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right. Without objection, those items are now before us. We'll now go to specials. I'll start on the west side of the horseshoe with Councilmember Nazarian.
Thank you, Council President. Since the department already requested for item 2 to be delayed to May 20th, I don't know if I need to make a request.
Yeah, I don't think you need to do anything.
All good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCosker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have a... On item 32, I have a verbal motion. I move that to adopt the Personnel and Hiring Committee report and the corrected ordinance, the corrected ordinance dated 4/11/25, and that we receive and file the ordinance, which was dated 1/28/25.
Is there a second to Councilmember McCosker's motion?
Second, Councilmember Jaroslawski, seconds? All right. Councilmember Gerardo?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to call item 35 and 37 special for a separate vote, and I'd like to call item 42 special. I move to adopt motion dated April 29th, 2025, as well as the revised ordinance dated June 13th, 2024, and I also have comments on it.
Is there a second to Councilmember Gerardo's motion? Councilmember Hernandez, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Hernandez, you have a special? All right. Blooming... Mr. Bloomingfield, any specials? All right. On this side of the room, Councilmember Jaroslawski.
Can we please continue item 4 to May 20th?
All right. Was that on our list, or is that a new one?
That was on our list, but it also could be new.
Okay. Councilmember Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Out of an abundance of caution, I'm recusing myself from item 39 because it's unclear whether a buyer was selected.
All right. Any other specials on this side of the room? All right. Councilmember Roman?
Can I call item 40 special for comments?
All right. Any others? All right. Madam Clerk, what's available for consideration at this time?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items 33, 34, 36, and also 32, sir.
All right. Let's open the roll on those items. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
All right. What's next?
Mr. President, council... Would... Council like to go and consider the separate votes for item 35 and 37, sir?
All right. Take 35 and 37. Call special for separate vote. Let's open the roll on 35 and 37. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 3 noes.
All right. What's next?
What is left is public comment, sir.
All right. Let's prepare for public comment.
To people providing public comment, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the council president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items on the agenda that are open for public comment are items 1, 3, 5 through 12, 14 through 17, 22 through 31, and 38 through 46. So again, let me repeat. The items that are open for public comment on the agenda are items 1, 3, 5 through 12, 14 through 17, 22 through 31, and 38 through 46. Items number 2, 4, 13, and 18 through 21 have been continued and are thus not open for public comment today. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. I have a couple more announcements. If I could have the interpreters make this first one aloud to the room, please? If you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences so the interpreters can interpret. Don't worry. We will pause your time while the interpreters are interpreting, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. Thank you. And finally, before we begin public comment, just as a reminder to people who are new here, we... The order in which public commenters are taken is taken at random, so you will hear names called out by a council staffer. Please wait till you hear your name called before lining up on your left-hand side of the council chambers. So once you hear your name called, you can line up on your left-hand side of the council chambers in any order. Thank you.
I will now count... Call names to go up and speak. Ella Esrada, Maricar Martinez, Michelle Wong.
Okay, so Mr. Herman, your time has not started yet, so I'm going to ask that you wait to speak until your time has started, just the same as everybody else. Before he begins, just as a warning to all the members of the public, I expect Mr. Herman to say some rather offensive things, I hope he doesn't, but the Brown Act does not require you, members of the public, to listen, so if you would like, there are a couple options, you can listen to him give his public comment, you can exit the room and wait outside if you prefer to do so, you can also pop in your headphones or stick your fingers in your ears. The Brown Act does not require you to listen to the other speakers during their public comment, period. Mr. Herman, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Item number three. Regarding public safety, el pinche departamento de cabrones. What the fuck, you're not translating?
The fucking department of fucking people.
Por qué no entiende cabrones, pulgas, negros?
Why do you understand fucking and black and bees?
Estos preguntas son muy importantes y necesarios por cabrones robando a nosotros pinchi ways.
Because these questions are very important for us, especially for the fucking people who are stealing to us.
Now, you see, that's what makes me an American citizen, I have that right, and I'm enforcing that right to declare why building is safety. Again, Mr. Attorney Rookie, look it up, Cohen versus California, look it up.
So you're welcome to speak to that during general public comment, as we remind you every time, but please stick to the agenda items for the first three minutes.
Working on it, look at item thirty-nine in CD fourteen, is that on topic? Good, you nodded, that means a dumb-dumb understands me because we're trying to stabilize affordable housing. How the fuck do you stabilize affordable housing, people? For years, you complained, you begged the city to pay your rent, you begged the government, which is the local government, because you don't support Trump, and Trump is fucking you over now, because we want accountability when it comes to affordability, when it comes to housing, and Smoke and Scan will agree with me that you've got to have a good reason why to challenge affordable housing. There is nothing affordable here. Everything is expensive in Los Angeles, and the only white nigger here to get that understanding right is me. So, if you want to have any interest, support MAGA. Now look at item number... There are a lot of fucking items here, forty-six fucking item. Item number forty-five, groat, what's wrong with that problem? California Public Records Act, because people are asking why the fuck Los Angeles continues not to provide us with the text messages from that fucking coup who runs this city? That goddamn Samboz has destroyed, Los Angeles has destroyed the trust of the people, and I represent the people. America first!
General public comment.
Now, there's nothing wrong in having a puppet show of children on either side of me because I care less. This is my arena, this is my floor, I control it like Smoke and Scan, either you watch it or you don't. But here's the problem, Samboz, you brought all the kiddies in here to make statements against the First Amendment. What the fuck do they know? What do they not understand? You see that? I control the floor, although Soto Martinez gets his rent covered by our government, Nithya Nudal picks her nose while I look at her, and that other dumb padilla woman is a stupid fool.
So, you need to connect this to something within, within the jurisdiction of the city.
And she's a fool, a union dude.
This is your last warning.
And your time has expired. Do not expect to hear from you for the rest of the meeting, or you will be subject to warnings and removal. Again, Mr. Herman, please vacate the podium so that we can move on to the next speaker.
I'd like to call up more names. Hugo Garcia, Madison Alcorn, Seamus Garrity.
Good morning, I know it's a tough act to follow, but which items would you like to speak to?
Just on forty-two.
So, okay, so you have one minute for the item, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, my name is Mitchell Wong, I'm here representing San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity. I just wanted to say thank you guys.
Sorry, can we hold this time for a second? Do you mind pulling the mic up just a little bit? Everybody, you can adjust the mic if it, yes, go ahead.
Is this a little better?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Mitchell Wong, I'm here representing San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity, I'm one of the project managers that we have there. I just wanted to take the time and say thank you guys very much for putting this on the agenda today. We are looking forward to putting people in affordable housing out in Elserino. Thank you very much.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Item number forty-two.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Good morning, councilmembers, my name is Hugo Garcia. I'm a lifelong resident of the community of Elserino in CD fourteen, chairman of the Elserino Organizing Committee, Director of Community Engagement for Clock Shop, a nonprofit in CD thirteen, as well as Director of Community Engagement for Save Elephant Hill in CD fourteen. I want to speak in favor of this item and thank Councilmember Hradto, our council member and her planning director, Kevin Okubio, for standing with the community in our efforts to have a voice as a community deserves in, on this issue. And I just want to say that this issue is larger than strictly a rezoning issue, the way the community looks at it, those of us that have been involved, I've been involved for over thirty-five years in the campaign to defeat... Do I have two minutes?
So, if you want general public comment, and I'll just remind everybody of this, so if you have an item you'd like to speak to and you want general public comment, please make sure to request both. I assume you're requesting general public comment, so yes, you have one minute for general.
Thank you, sorry about that. So it's larger than just or strictly a rezoning issue because those of us who have been involved in the fight to preserve our community for over half a century in Elserino have fought to stop, and the freeway project maintained the integrity and the character of the community as it always has been, and we felt that we wanted our voice heard in that regard, and it was not being heard by city planning, by our former council member, as well as the mayor's office. But when our council member Hradto came in, she readily listened to the community, and Kevin, her staff member that met with us, we're very grateful because we got our voice heard, and we believe that the motion that's being presented today reflects the sentiments of the community. So again, I want to thank the council members' office and staff, and we look forward to
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Spanish. Buenos dias, ¿de qué puntos, de qué temas quiere hablar? Buenos dias, concejales, mi nombre es Madison Alarcón, con la organización Translatina Coalition del Distrito de la Ciudad número diez.
Good morning, my councilmembers, my name is Melissa Alarcón from Translatina Coalition from District Ten.
Estoy aquí para hablar en apoyo de la iniciativa de bienestar, equidad y cuidado de TGI.
I am here to support the initiative of well-being and care of TGI.
Es una inversión de tres millones de dólares en organizaciones comunitarias que sirven a personas trans y a TGI.
This is an investment of three million dollars that benefits community organizations and trans people and TGI.
Y es una inversión muy importante para nosotras como mujeres trans, ya que gracias a eso podemos apoyar a muchas trans con sus necesidades, ya sea que viven en este país o que van recién llegando.
This is a very important investment for us women trans, because it will support many needs, not only of the people that are here, but also the newcomers, newcomer people.
El condado ha dado un paso al frente para apoyar a sus electores TGI, y todavía hay tiempo para que nuestros ayunos de herramientas hagan lo mismo.
The county has given an important step to support the TGI constituents, and it is at the time, there's still time for the city to do the same.
Estamos aquí por nuestras compañeras que ya no están, por las compañeras que han sido deportadas, y por las compañeras que están en detención.
We are here also to support the, those colleagues of ours that are not here, that are detained, and also those that are, that have been deported.
Gracias.
Thank you.
I'd like to call up more names before the next speaker speaks. Ruth Leiner, Harriet Elliott, Nick Van Exel.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
I would like to speak on item forty-two and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general, go ahead.
Yes, I'm here, I rep, my name is Seamus Garrity, I represent Habitat for Humanity of San Gabriel Valley, and I just want to comment on the importance of this council action today, and just how long a process it has been, and just tell you how grateful the organization is to Councilwoman Hradto and her staff for revisiting the item and making sure that it, it really is the best version of the Upzone that is possible. I also, I just want to mention, you know, I, we represent Habitat, several Habitat for Humanity affiliates and Habitat for Humanity of California, and what they do is provide affordable home ownership opportunities, and I think that in the, in the space of housing advocacy, affordable home ownership is something that is greatly...
General public comment.
...underappreciated. We advocate for affordable housing, we advocate for rental units, but affordable home ownership is, is something that is in a very unique space in that, in the, in the spectrum of that discourse, and so I just, I want to take a moment to amplify the, the mission of Habitat for Humanity as affordable home ownership is, is something that really provides families with a unique opportunity. So thank you for everything you're doing on this item, and please keep, keep Habitat in mind and keep affordable home ownership in mind as something to advocate for, thank
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, general comment, please.
Okay, you have one minute, go ahead.
My name is Ruth Camelia Veyaya, and I live and work in City District Ten. I'm a legal analyst at the TransLatina Coalition where I support transgender expansive and intersex individuals fleeing persecution and seeking asylum. Our legal team has been at capacity for some time, and we've had to refer people out, yet none of the local pro bono legal service providers have room to take on new cases. This need is overwhelming, and the support is not keeping up. Transgender migrants face alarming rates of violence and discrimination globally. In Latin America and the Caribbean, seventy percent of trans murders worldwide occur, with most victims being black trans women, trans women of color, and trans sex workers. A study of LGBT asylum seekers found that ninety-two percent experienced physical assault, eighty-four percent faced harassment, and fifty-six percent suffered sexual assault. Even upon reaching the US, TGI asylum seekers often endure re-traumatization in detention centers, facing inadequate medical care and abuse. Please fund and protect the programs that uplift...
Your time has expired. So, announcement for everybody is wait for the next speaker to come up. I understand the time can go by rather quickly. If you run out of time and you would like to provide additional comments, you can do so, or if you are, if we're unable to call your name due to time constraints, you can provide written public comment at lacouncilcomment.com. You can find that URL at the top of every single council agenda, you can also just do a quick Google search and you should be able to find it. Thank you. Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
All items, and, and for the clerk, I signed up as Nick Van Exel.
And I assume general?
And general, please, yes.
So three minutes for the items and one minute for general, go ahead.
Two of these items are directly related, but all of them are on the same core issue, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, and that is the applicability of the California Public Records Act, and whether setting your records to automatically disappear means they are no longer subject to the law. Item forty-six is where this all started. While the city's use of disappearing G chats has been known for a long time, this was the first real challenge to the policy, and what did we see? During the winter recess, the city attorney announced they would be evaluating this policy and investigating it. They clearly had pause about our legal vulnerability. And by the time the council returned from recess, what happened? Our city was on fire. On day one of the fire, the city attorney was asking departments, including the fire department, that's how serious this was, to, to end the auto-delete policy. Within days, they officially pulled the plug. And while they said this was about preserving the records so we could learn lessons from the experience, it's really clear this was about legal vulnerability, because every media outlet was piling on CPRA requests. That brings us to the other two items. We saw a bizarre and laughable argument being offered up to defend Karen Bass' auto-deleted text messages. And this argument was not coming from the city attorney's office, it was coming from Dave Michelson, a former city attorney who had hopped over and was the mayor's counsel. Last time I checked, Heidi Feldstein Soto, I didn't vote for her, but she ran for office, she got elected, and she is our city attorney, not Dave Michelson. This is insulting to the voters, the charter, our state law, whatever. Now we are being sued over this mess, and we need a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for outside counsel. First, there's no way that's going to cover the tab, you all know that, this is just the beginning, and we're going to end up spending way more than that, if this actually goes to court and you intend to appeal it all the way. Secondly, you realize how shameful this is? The theme of our budget season is we are trying to overturn every couch cushion and find some loose change. Mr. McCosker, if I told you I had a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars sitting around, you would, you would get so excited like Sailing just got awarded to San Pedro, because you know that could cover two positions, two essential positions in the city, everyone This is all on top of the, the ban on words, and at least that one, people are empathizing with you. They don't when it comes to ignoring public records law. I hope you realize the distinction there. This is all just indicative of the lack of checks and balances we have, and the concerns people had about Marquise being council president, because he is not serving this council, he's not serving the people, he's not serving any one of you. Above all, it's Karen Bass.
General public comment?
We've had this budget talk going on, and everybody wants to talk about charter reform, even Matt Zavo, department heads, council members, city workers coming up here in public comment and saying we need systemic reform. And two weeks ago, Mayor Bass stood in this hall in front of the city and said she would be making her initial charter commission appointments with the week with the goal of standing up the commission by the end of the month. We've blown Bass past both of those goals. She's had ten months to decide on these appointments. For the last four months, she's been out of compliance with the law y'all passed that she signed for ten months. Mr. McCosker, what happened last summer? Karen Bass was not engaged with the officer discipline movement to overhaul that process and vetoed it, saying that it was rushed and we needed more time. Do you want to repeat that again? Because that's where we're walking towards. This city hall has been fucking around for way too long, and now we're finding out with this budget deficit. Are you all just going to just mindlessly?
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker?
Before the next speaker speaks, I'd like to call up more names. Burr, Jessica, Stacy Segura.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Twenty-seven. First of all, I want to ask Herman Herman, how can he be for MAGA and against Trump?
So I'm going to ask that you stick to the agenda items first, please.
But I want him to explain it sometime. I saw that big, huge twenty-foot sign against Mayor Bass, Karen Bass, saying resign and then we'll turn the lights on. Okay? This to me means mafia, okay?
So I'm, apologies. I can't tell which item you're on. You mentioned twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven is a street lighting district.
Yes, exactly what I'm talking about. That's what the, they said, we'll turn the lights on if you resign. Okay, that's shit. That's, that's a corrupt city, okay? So I have a little respect for her. Also, what did they expect her to do? She eliminated forty-four jobs in the LAPD.
Okay, so I'm going to move you to general public comment, but you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay. Paper act request. I did it and found someone that was supposedly Romero killed my son. Gerzon wrote me, Gail Gason Officer, that my son's case is in the cold case file, meaning the police are lying. Why? Okay, ese libro nos escribió un hombre muy muy religioso, okay? ¿Cómo protege el se de los rayos X?
This book was written by a very smart man about how to protect yourself from X-rays.
Él habla de energía dirigida.
He talks about directed energy.
Aunque no lo soy religiosa, él es sí, muy religiosa.
Even though I'm not religious, he is.
Okay. Also teleportation. Él habla de teleportation. En la vida secular, no hay teleportation.
And he also talks about teleportation, but in secular life, there is no teleportation.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
I will call up more names. Mario Garcia, Jonathan Bazil, Byron Jose.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
This is a general comment.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
My name is Jessica. I'm a property owner in Los Angeles. My home is located off Calzone Street, just off the five freeway. Since August twenty twenty-four, four K rails have been blocking my entrance to my home. They were originally at the end of the sidewalk, but due to frequent car accidents, one of them deadly, the barriers have been pushed directly against my property, and I'm not able to access my property. The car accidents continue, and they're now crashing into my retaining wall and causing damage and harm to my property. Despite numerous calls to Caltrans, City of L.A., Department of Transportation, City Council's Office, District fourteen, I have not been able to get hold of anyone. I've been calling numerous times, trying to schedule an email or an appointment, and I just want the K rails moved back to their original place so I can access my home. So I need help from preventing property damage and to schedule an appointment with the city council's office of District fourteen. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. I'm here for a general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Jonathan, a community health navigator with the TransLatina Coalition in City District Eight. I'm here to speak upon the initiative of the TGI Wellness Equity and Care Initiative, a fifty-three million dollar investment into TGI-led and TGI-serving CBOs. Along with this initiative, we advocate for an earmark of at least seven million in ULA funds for a housing subsidy open to a range of applicants that expands beyond TGI Angelenos. At this very moment, both immigrants and transgender, gender nonconforming, and intersex people are being attacked by the federal government. If there is no pushback or protections being introduced this fiscal year, things will be getting worse for these communities. It takes the power of a governmental force to fight against the vitriol that will continue to ignite more hate crimes and more dissension amongst Los Angelenos. We are thankful to those in the city that sincerely see that equity, racial justice, and LGBTQIA rights are all connected, and support for the fight for TGI people who need the city to build capacity to accurately address the issues impacting our communities. We hope that you are willing and able to break the cycle of erasure and improve the lives of TGI people through this current budgeting process. We appreciate your support, and we'll keep fighting until there's equity for all of us.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
TGI, we, Ms. Loretta Lorraine, Bert, thank you, Ugo, and Ms. Hunt, and you, Ms. Hernandez, for doing so much good jobs. And I'm here to present the senior citizens right here, the Diamonds, I'm a piece of the Diamonds for TransLatina. We are here to ask for three million dollars to keep people safe and to keep people, because our our community is dying, is being killed out there. Ugo, thank you for, Ms. Emily, she was one of the girls that were murdered in Hollywood, and Ugo was there for her. And I'm here to make sure that we have a place, in a safe place, to make sure. And sir, that clown over there, honey, don't worry about him. We came serious. I come serious with you, with my people, to make sure that you do the right thing. Because this clown right here don't mean nothing. Because he doesn't need you to come disrespect y'all. Y'all do your job and do it right.
We certainly appreciate everyone's patience. Thank you.
I'd like to call up more names. Maya Daniels, Michelle Garcia, Bonnie Blue.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Forty-two and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Good morning, City Council, Byron Jose with the TransLatina Coalition. And I know some of you set the example, so I think your staffers are going to continue to just chat in the back during public comment. We're glad to have met with Supervisor Herado to ensure, to hear some of the priorities for her office. And if only we were as important as last management for Bob Blumenfield. Thank you for the Budget Committee and the rest of the City Council for meeting with us and ensuring that your priorities are reflected in the budget and in your policy throughout the council. On June, on January sixth, we emailed the office of Bob Blumenfield. On January twenty-third, we followed up. In March, I looked Jeff to ensure that the Budget Deputy for Bob Blumenfield was able to meet with us. So I will enlist the help of the city clerk and the sergeant-at-arms. We brought fourteen copies for every office so that the rest of you can also see some of the impact, the need, and some of the services we rendered in, thank you, some of the services rendered in that district. We have shared some letters with all of you regarding your districts. So we definitely want to appreciate the opportunity to continue meeting with all of you, with your deputies and your budget team, to ensure that this continues to go up. I will wait here on the side for a staffer from Bob Blumenfield's office. I brought some copies for his entire team. There's twenty copies here. I don't know who from that office is reading or not reading the emails, and I know he was able to dip out. So now we have Nithya here, so out of nowhere, or for now, council president and Bob Blumenfield are headed to. Anyways, thank you Supervisor, Councilmember Hut, for being one of the officers who is doing what she said she was going to do. The mayor's team did not include a line item for the TGI Wellness and Equity Initiative and meet three million dollars. And yet, during the budget process, Heather Hut, the council member, introduced a memo. So we look forward to working with the rest of the Budget Committee to ensure that that continues to be in the priority in the review on the eighth. And we also look forward to the rest of the council offices that are supporting this initiative. Thank you for your time.
Good, good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
My name is Maya Daniels. My pronouns are they/them, and I'm the Policy Associate with the TransLatina Coalition. We are here today with our outreach team and a handful of our senior group, the Diamonds. These elders of our community have seen it all, and they are still here to show up and speak out for our community. We are hoping that our memo made by Councilmember Hut survives the week. We have letters for the bailiff to pass out to Councilmember Marquis Harris Dawson and his team, as we were unable to contact him or engage his office. These letters hold the data of clients the TransLatina Coalition serves in your district. I have around thirty-six copies. Our organization has been, as you well know by now, meeting with the city offices advocating for the TGI Wellness and Equity Initiative to locate three million to be distributed to several transgender, gender nonconforming, and intersex-serving organizations. As hate permeates our highest forms of government, it is imperative to invest in TGI communities, building their own infrastructures of safety and care, instead of leaving them in the hands of those who don't hold the knowledge to care for our communities or hold their own.
Speaker, your time has expired. Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Follow the rule. You have to ask my name. My name is Bonnie Blue Shilo Hendricks. And I'm here to speak on one, two, three, general. For item number one, this item has to change its gender first. Item number one. For item number two. Item number two, it has to change its gender first. For item number three. Item number three has to change its gender first.
For general public comment?
For general public comment, I want to hear, to talk about our council president and our city attorney. You have to change your gender first. And second of all, I'm here to ask our city attorney that our city attorney said a fighting word is not allowed in the city council, a threatening word is not allowed in the city council. And then when I reported to the city attorney that someone said, I'm going to kill your dog, someone said, I'm going to kill you. And then somehow, city attorney said, those are not threatening words. City attorney said, those are not fighting words. And then city attorney quoted the Supreme Court cases, Chiplinski. So, I mean, kill is not a, is not a fighting word, is not a threatening word, because Mr. Herman used the same word, he got arrested by the LAPD. But any other community member using the kill word against Mr. Herman, Mr. City Attorney said, that's totally okay. Thank you very much, City Attorney. I love you.
So just to clarify the record there, I do not believe the city attorney's office has ever said anything about that matter.
I'd like to call up more names. Loretta Lorraine, Alexa Larrin, Elise Tejada, Shilo Hendricks, Rob Quan.
Buenos dias. Good morning. My name is Alexa Larrin.
Good morning. My name is Alexa Larrin.
Vengo a apoyar, vengo a abogar por mis compañeras TransLatina Coalition, para las personas mayores como yo. TransLatina Coalition.
Can we hold the time for just a second?
Señora Alejandra.
Speaker, hold on just one second. If I could ask the interpreters, and we're holding their time, just to let the speaker know to pause every few sentences, and then let us know which items they would like to speak to.
Señora Alejandra, antes de que empiece de nuevo, tenemos que pedirle que para permitir la interpretación, necesitamos que usted dé una pausa después de cada frase para permitir la interpretación. Me podría decir en cuáles puntos quisiera dar su comentario?
Pues yo soy sorda, no oigo, y este, he pasado muchas tragedias, y TransLatina Coalition me ha ayudado bastante.
I'm sorry. Is it general public comment?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney. The commenter has commented that they are deaf and may not be able to hear what I'm saying. We'll be sending an interpreter to the podium in one moment.
Okay, so why don't
Es un comentario general para todas.
This is a general comment for everyone.
Yo quiero que ayuden a toda mi comunidad TransLatina Coalition para que ayuden a las chicas.
So why don't we do this, if I can have this explained to the speaker? We're going to reset the clock. If, if you need more time for this accommodation request, please let us know. But to pause every few sentences so that the interpreters can interpret. But take your time. Go ahead.
Necesito que ayuden a TransLatina Coalition en general.
We need you to help the TransLatino Coalition in general?
Para que ayuden a las trans de toda la tercera edad porque ya nosotros no podemos trabajar.
So that you can help senior trans people, because they are no longer able to work.
Y por favor quiero que los ayuden en el nombre de Dios, please.
And I ask that you help them in the name of God, please.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Si buenas tardes. Mire, mi nombre es Michelle Garcia.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Michelle Garcia.
Es un comentario general.
And this is a general comment.
Yo, más que nada, yo quisiera que nos ayudaran a las mujeres transgénero que ya somos mayor de edad.
And in overall, I would like to ask for you to help trans women, since we are now senior citizens.
Que nosotras fuimos las pioneras, fuimos las que les abrimos las puertas a toda la juventud.
We were the pioneers of this. We were the ones that opened this trail for our youth.
A nosotras nos golpearon. Qué no nos hicieron?
They hit us. They assaulted us. They hurt us.
Y cuantas amigas ya se nos fueron cuando vino esa enfermedad del HIV.
And how many friends have we lost after the new illness came about with HIV?
Y las que quedamos.
And those of us that are still here.
Porque en aquellos tiempos nos tomábamos un coctel de pastillas en la mañana y un coctel de pastillas en la noche.
Because in those times, we were basically taking a cocktail of pills during the, in the morning, and then another cocktail of pills at night.
Y yo, en representación de mis compañeras, les pido que nos ayuden.
And I, in name of myself and my, my friends, we, we ask for your help.
Que ya estamos enfermas, ya no podemos trabajar.
We're sick now, and we can't work anymore.
Eso es todo. Muchas gracias.
And that's it. Thank you very much.
Next speaker. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. Hello, my name is Cristo Baraja with Translatina Coalition District A. I'm going to, I'm coming here to support the community TGI. I'm here to speak as part of the TGI Wellness Equity and Care Initiative, a $3 million investment into TGI, leading TGI-serving community-based organizations. This assist is coming directly from community members, clients and leaders, and founders of several organizations, cater to best helping our community. Along with this initiative, we have both care for a earmark of least $7 million ULA funds for a housing subsidy to a range of applicants that expanded beyond TGI Angelinos. The county has stepped out to support the TGI constituents, and there is still time for our city council to do the same. Thank you.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General Public Comment.
Okay, and feel free to move the mic if you'd like. You have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Elise Tejada, and I'm from Translatina Coalition. The mission of the Translatina Coalition is to advocate the specific needs of the trans Latino community that resides in the United States into planning strategies that improve our quality of life. That mean is, Translatina Coalition is the place that supports our transgendered community. I am Elise. I am not only immigrant, I am transgender woman. Please, we really need your support, guys, because Translatina Coalition is the safe place to support our community. In your hands, in your voice, in your vote, in your mind is our lives. Please, my future, the future of my coworkers, the future of my community, Translatina Coalition is in your hands. Please, we really need you to approve the $3 million, and this is gonna be the best opportunity for our community. Thank you.
Next speaker?
I believe that's our last speaker.
There are no more people. That concludes public comment.
Were any other names called? Who are still waiting to speak? Was your name called? So we'll allow for one, our final speaker. Please proceed to the podium. That'll be the final speaker of the day. Thank you.
And officers, do we have the hand mic ready?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, please proceed, speaker. This will be our final speaker.
So, good morning, speaker. I understand there is an accommodation request, so take your time. Which items would you like to speak to?
General Public Comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Bernard, and I am a resident of Council District 10. I'd like to explicitly thank Kimani Danielle Alex from Councilmember Hutt's office for contacting Melissa Conley, the Wellington Square Farmers Market Manager. I am so fortunate to live in a community where the elected leaders actually listen to and address the constituents' concerns. So thank you again, and go Bruins.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we will be closing public comment. Madam Clerk, what items can we now vote on?
Madam President, there is a request to continue items three, 10, and 12 to May 20th, 2025.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order.
And what is before council now for voting? Our items one, five through nine, 11, 15 through 17, 22 through 31, 38, 41, as well as 43.
Thank you very much. At this time, let's open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next, Madam President, is item 39, and Mr. Price is recused from that item.
And I'll wait until Mr. Price has been removed. Okay, let's open the roll on item, I'm sorry.
Madam President, that would be item 39, in which Mr. Price recused.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's open the roll on item 39. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Let's move on to item 42. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to request that item 39 go forth with.
Without objection.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item 42, for comments from Ms. Gerardo.
Okay. Colleagues-
Oh, yes, sorry, one. And let's get Mr. Price back on the board. Give us a moment.
Okay.
Give us a moment, thank you. All right, that's fine. We'll continue without Councilmember Price at the moment. Ms. Gerardo, apologies.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, today I rise alongside residents of El Surino over here to put forward a new vision for our community, one that centers the voice and needs of the people most impacted by City Hall. We are here to implement residential and commercial zoning along the long abandoned 710 North Freeway Extension. This motion echoes the voices of my constituents who have long called for responsible land use policies that protect their homes, businesses, and communities. When I first introduced a motion to address zoning in this area, my office received strong and immediate pushback. Many felt the proposal echoed a troubling history, decades of displacement, disinvestment, and decisions made without them. From inconsistent zoning to poor land practices by Caltrans, residents have faced the consequences of a system that hasn't served them, consequences that have blighted their community. That history is real, and so is the harm. But today is about turning the page to start a new chapter. The revised motion you see before you is the result of cogovernance in action, many, many meetings with our planning director, with community members, working very closely to find a solution that centers the needs of El Surino, a turning point in how this community is represented in City Hall. And colleagues, in the spirit of cogovernance, I strongly urge a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gerardo. And at this time, let's open the roll on item-
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Wonderful. Let's move on to item 40, which actually I had called Special for Comments. Colleagues, I am very excited to vote on item 40 today, which actually has been two years in the making, a separate problem about how speedily our city moves, which we should address. A majority of affordable housing in our city has been produced through incentive programs, like the state density bonus or the TOC program, and a lot of those new units are in buildings that line our city's major boulevards and thoroughfares. But right now, Angelinos who qualify for affordable housing don't have a straightforward way of finding and applying for this housing. The Housing Department does have an Affordable and Accessible Housing Registry, thanks to a 2016 settlement agreement, but this registry does not actually provide all TOC units in a searchable online database. It only provides a certain subset of them. That's why I put forward a motion in April of 2023 requesting that the Housing Department create a centralized, multilingual, and easy-to-navigate online database that's gonna allow people who qualify for affordable housing to search for all available housing in the city of Los Angeles in one place. As somebody who talks about housing a lot, talks about housing in my communities a lot, I also think that this database, which will make it clear where affordable housing exists, and how to apply for it, and what are the qualifications to get into it, I actually think that this can help build trust for housing across our communities. People look at larger buildings, and they often see only luxury housing, and this will allow them to see that new buildings, which are producing the largest number of affordable housing units in Los Angeles through incentive and density programs, this will allow them to trust that these are actually units that are available for all Angelinos, and not just for luxury apartment dwellers. So I want to ask for your aye vote today, and I hope that we can get this database in place in a speedy manner. With that, Madam Clerk, can you call, open the roll on item 40? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, and with that, I believe we are at our closed session items. And if we could move to closed session for item 46?
Actually, Madam President, closed session would be for items 46, correct, as well as 44 and 45, please.
Okay, great. So let's move into closed session for all those three items.
So then you're gonna be inspected a second time after that 30-day period. That gives you that grace period of 30 days to correct the violation. Then owners can check the status of their property again by registering your account at vms3.lafd.org. Now, if the property's not fully in compliance upon initial inspection, that owner is going to be notified via mail or email if it registered within that website that we mentioned. So it's important to also say there's no need to call the LEFD Brush Unit when you're ready for your reinspection. That reinspection will be automatically scheduled as appropriate with their timeframes. It's all computerized. So if your property remains in noncompliance after a failed reinspection, then it's gonna be cleared by city contractors. And the property owner, or you, will be invoiced a noncompliance fee of $668 plus an administrative fee of $1,498 on top of the contractor's fee, so you certainly want to avoid this. We get asked a lot of questions. Here is your top seven most frequently asked questions and the answers. So number one is, how can I check the brush status of my own property? Again, that's that important website that we're driving home, the vms3.lafd.org. You could register a new brush clearance account there and check the stats. Now, use your APN, or the Assessor Parcel Number, as well as a PIN, which is your personal identification number. It's going to be printed on the bottom of the owner notification that was mailed to you annually in March. Often we get asked, well, what is the best way to contact the brush unit? Simply put, the best way is to send an email. You send it to lafdbrush@la-city.org. Now, if you incorporate your APN and a brief description of the issue or the problem that you would like to discuss, that greatly assists us determining who you are and what the issue is. And then a member of our brush unit will respond to you within 48 hours. Also, you could feel free to call. It's, the number is 1-800-994-4444. But we do ask for your patience in advance because it's very busy and there's minimal inspectors, so we have limited resources to take your call. But the office hours are from 7:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, excluding holidays. So what if you received a notice of noncompliance in the mail? What are you supposed to do then? Well, start by reading that notice very carefully. Identify the actual violations that were mentioned on your property. See what was cited there. And then you could follow the steps in the frequently asked questions. The first one there, to see photos that was taken by the inspector of your property and where the problem is. Then you want to correct those violations by the due date. So look at that due date. It'll be located at the top right corner of your notice. Here's another question we get. Okay, you were issued a notice of noncompliance, and now you did the right thing. You finished clearing your property of the violations that you were cited. Now what? What's next? Well, truthfully, you don't have to do anything at this point. After the allotted 30-day period, a fire inspector is going to re-inspect your property, and if your property is still in noncompliance, then you get that second notice to abate the fire hazard. That'll be mailed to you. Now, the city will start the process to have your property cleared by a contractor at your expense, so you want to avoid that. Some ask if there is a particular contractor that should be used to clear your property. Well, simply put, the city does not provide a recommendation, nor do we endorse any contractor. So really, it's you as the property owner. It's your responsibility to request the current proof of insurance, if they're bonded, if they have a license, and obtain any other relevant information about that contractor. But we do try to help. So there is a brush clearance contractor list on the website. So what do you do if you feel that the inspector is wrong, and that your property is in compliance? And can you file an appeal? Well, the answer is yes. Yes, you can. Visit the LEFD Brush website to view the detailed inspection process, and that includes appeals. However, note that a failed inspection will subject you as the owner to fees that continue to increase with each failed inspection. All billing is conducted through the city's accounting services section. So if you have questions about that concerning your fees, or your invoices, or any fees that even could be attached to a tax bill, you should direct those to the source. That's accounting. So you could either call them at 213-978-3424, or you could send an email to lafd brushesaccg@la-city.org. We understand that many people might be worried about their neighbor's property, and that they might have a fire hazard because of some overgrown brush. And how would you report that? So first off, we want you to know that the fire department wants to hear your concerns, so we can provide the clearance necessary- so we can provide the clearance necessary for our firefighters to protect your property and your neighborhood. So you can report a brush fire hazard by email to lafdbrush@la-city.org. Now, please make sure that you include the exact location of the brush hazards, the address. If you have the APN, that would be even better. But of course, you need to put a brief description of what the hazards are and where those hazards are on the property. And of course, it's best not to go looking at those hazards on that neighbor's property without permission. You also can make your complaint by phone. That same phone number we provided before to our brush clearance unit is 1-800-994-4444. And again, we welcome your complaint, but remember too that we have limited resources to take your call, and those hours are from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday.
... scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.
Here's what's happening in L.A. this week.
This is L.A. Current.
This is about all of us. It's about choosing to believe in our city again and proving it with action. And no matter what our city faces, L.A. never, ever gives up.
L.A. City's Department of Recreation and Parks invites you to a nature hike with their urban ecologist through Ken Malloy Harbor Regional Park. Urban ecologist Ryan Kinzel will be guiding participants through the unique habitat of this harbor city park. The park's Machado Lake is part of SoCal's natural water habitat and home to over 300 species of migratory birds. Enjoy the sights and sounds of native animals and plants at Ken Malloy Harbor Regional Park. Wear comfortable shoes and bring water for this nature hike with Urban Ecologist on Saturday, May 10th at 8:00 a.m. Learn more under the Events tab at laparks.org. Saturday, May 10th, is Board Game Day at the Downtown Central Library. Bring your favorite board game and connect with community members at this monthly meetup, which welcomes new and experienced players. Don't worry if you don't have a game. Join a gaming group as it forms, or borrow a game from the library's welcome table in the rotunda. Whether you bluff, strategize, or simply want to roll the dice, join L.A.'s Public Library at the Central Library for Board Game Day on Saturday, May 10th at 12:00 p.m. Learn more at lapl.org/events. Mother's Day is coming, and Green Meadows Recreation Center presents its Mother's Day Brunch on Saturday, May 10th. L.A. City's Department of Recreation and Parks and Councilmember Corinne Price are making sure that moms get the honors they deserve at this annual community luncheon. The event will have music, food, entertainment, and an opportunity to celebrate and thank moms and mother figures. The Green Meadows Mother's Day Brunch takes place on Saturday, May 10th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For more information, see the calendar at cd9.lacity.gov. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
The City of Los Angeles Emergency Management Department has opened applications for its 2025 Camp Ready L.A. Program. Now in its third year, the program is for late high school, early college students who are interested in city service and first response, or who've been impacted by a disaster. Camp participants will learn practical skills for many types of emergencies over the four-day program, taking place from July 22nd to July 25th at L.A. City's Emergency Operations Center. Participants will build connections with other campers and emergency management experts while developing their own community leadership skills. Young Angelenos aged 18 to 24 can apply for the 2025 Camp Ready L.A. Program beginning May 1st. For more information, visit emergency.lacity.gov/readyla. The Los Angeles Police Department Commercial Crimes Division announced the arrest of two people and the recovery of millions of dollars' worth of goods by the cargo theft unit. At storage unit facilities in the San Fernando Valley, detectives recovered over $1.2 million in stolen goods, which included tequila, speakers, clothing, and pet food. A stolen shipment of Bitcoin mining computers valued at $2.7 million was recovered at Los Angeles International Airport just as the computers were about to be loaded onto a flight to Hong Kong. The two arrests followed an extensive investigation in collaboration with Los Angeles Port Police, Union Pacific Police, and the Los Angeles World Airport Police. For more information, visit lapdonline.org. Los Angeles World Airport's LAWA has recognized the winners of the 2024 Friendly Flyer Award Program at Van Nuys Airport. The Friendly Flyer Award Program was established in 2012 and is part of Van Nuys Airport's overall outreach and sustainability efforts. Award winners must have no violations of LAWA's noise abatement and curfew regulation and be in observance of the Quieter Nights Program, avoiding flights between 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. Among the 26 award winners for 2024 are 22 repeat winners and four first-time winners, including ATI Jet, MC Group, OKVS, and Ventura Air Services. According to LAWA, the Friendly Flyer Award winners reduced their nighttime jet operations by 21% year over year, benefiting the surrounding communities. For more information, visit lawa.org/news-releases.
The number-one cause of preventable death after injury is bleeding. Someone who is severely bleeding can bleed to death in as little as five minutes. Minutes count, and your LAFD thanks you for learning how to stop the bleed by following the ABCs. If someone has an injury with blood spreading out of the wound, clothing soaked in blood, bleeding that won't stop, or loss of any part of the body... clothing soaked in blood, bleeding that won't stop, or loss of any part of an arm or leg, you need to act quickly. The first step is A for alert. Have someone call 911. The next step is B for bleeding. Locate the bleeding injury and remove any clothing covering the area so you can see the injury. The final step is C for compress. Use any clean cloth. Apply the dressing directly to the wound and press down hard. Push down on top of the wound with both hands as hard as you can. If blood soaks through the dressing, do not remove it. Add another dressing on top and continue applying steady pressure. Do not release the pressure to check the wound. Keep steady pressure until help arrives.
Hi, I'm Eric Scott, Captain and Public Information Officer for the Los Angeles City Fire Department. Often, people ask us really, "What is brush clearance and why is it important?" So simply put, brush fires continue to threaten life and property in the very high fire hazard severity zone. So that means areas that are prone to wildfires. And having brush clearance provides us the defensible space to save those lives and property. So particularly, when you're clearing all of those ground fuels or the lower vegetation, that really helps us because it'll present what is called the fire ladder. And that's when the fire starts off low on the ground and it starts to climb upward to where it gets spread by winds. So what you might see is an amber wood land on the ground. It would ignite the grass that is there, or what we call is light flashy fuel. Then it's going to jump to those lower hanging limbs or those branches and starts to climb up the tree, ignites that heavier fuel, and that just exacerbates the problem. So this requirement does not apply to your healthy fruit trees or privacy hedges or ornamental shrubbery, as long as that's all well-maintained, meaning that it's free of all dead and dry material. Also, people ask, "Well, what are the basic brush clearance requirements?" So your basic requirements are this. You want to trim the weeds and the grass down to three inches. You need to trim the bottom third of a bush, the bottom six feet of a tree. Now, around your home, you'd want to maintain five feet clearance from the roof line. So if you're five foot tall and you're walking the perimeter of your roof, nothing should hit you in the head. And then you want to double that to 10 feet from the chimney, fences, and roadways. And it's important to note that these requirements are all within 200 feet of any structure or home, regardless if that structure or home is on your property or adjoining properties like your neighbors. So it's those areas that need to be clear in order to limit the spread of fire and to provide the defensible space for us firefighters to safely operate. So simply put, we'll provide the offense if you provide the defense. So here's your basic inspection process. It begins with the owner's self-inspection. So you want to compare your native brush and your landscape vegetation on your property with the information that you're going to find in the mailer and also on the lafd.org/brush website. Now, if you have difficulties and you're not able to do that yourself, you can hire a professional who can both understand the information and then apply it to the property that you own. But you want to clear your property as required prior to May 1st this year. And that way, you're going to pass the fire department's inspection and you'll avoid a $33 noncompliance fee and also a time-consuming second inspection, which comes with a costly $668 noncompliance fee. So it's important to note, too, that there's no need to call for an inspection at any time. You don't need to call for an inspection. We're going to do that automatically. Our computer system tracks all the properties that are due for an inspection. So then we'll have an appropriate inspector. They're going to be notified that your property is due, and they're going to come in and inspect and/or re-inspect if needed. Now for the first inspection. That first inspection is done by us, the fire department, and it is in May 1st, and it continues until June 30th. However, we want people to know that it is a year-round requirement to have brush clearance. And all parcels that are within that very high fire hazard severity zone, they will be initially inspected. Those parcels that are found in violation are going to be issued a notice of violation. And they'll be assessed, and that's when you get that $33 noncompliance fee. Then the homeowner has about 30 days to comply with that notice of violation. And the owner can check the status of their property by registering an account at vms3.lafd.org. So now, when we come to the second inspection, that means that you, as a homeowner, were issued a notice of violation on the first inspection. So then you're going to be inspected a second time after that 30-day period. That gives you that grace period of 30 days to correct the violation. Then owners can check the status of their property again by registering your account at vms3.lafd.org. Now, if the property's not fully in compliance upon initial inspection, that owner is going to be notified via mail or email if you're registered within that website that we mentioned. So it's important to also say, there's no need to call the LAFD brush unit when you're ready for your re-inspection. That re-inspection will be automatically scheduled as appropriate with their timeframes. It's all computerized. So if your property remains in noncompliance after a failed re-inspection, then it's going to be cleared by city contractors. And the property owner, or you, will be invoiced a noncompliance fee of $668 plus an administrative fee of $1,498 on top of the contractor's fee, so you certainly want to avoid this. We get asked a lot of questions. Here is your top seven most frequently asked questions and the answers. So number one is, "How can I check the brush status of my own property?" Again, that's that important website that we're driving home, the vms3.lafd.org. You could register a new brush clearance account there and check the status. Now, use your APN or the assessor parcel number, as well as a PIN, which is your personal identification number. It's going to be printed on the bottom of the owner notification that was mailed to you annually in March. Often, we get asked, "Well, what is the best way to contact the brush unit?" Simply put, the best way is to send an email. You send it to lafdbrush@lecity.org. Now, if you incorporate your APN and a brief description of the issue or the problem that you would like to discuss, that greatly assists us determining who you are and what the issue is. And then, a member of our brush unit will respond to you within 48 hours. Also, you could feel free to call. It's, the number is 1-800-994-4444. But we do ask for your patience in advance because it's very busy and there's minimal inspectors, so we have limited resources to take your call. But the office hours are from 7:00 AM until 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday, excluding holidays. So what if you received a notice of noncompliance in the mail? What are you supposed to do then? Well, start by reading that notice very carefully. Identify the actual violations that were mentioned on your property. See what was cited there. And then you could follow the steps in the frequently asked questions. The first one there, to see photos that was taken by the inspector of your property and where the problem is. Then, you want to correct those violations by the due date. So look at that due date. It'll be located at the top-right corner of your notice. Here's another question we get. "Okay, you were issued a notice of noncompliance, and now you did the right thing. You finished clearing your property of the violations that you were cited. Now what? What's next?" Well, truthfully, you don't have to do anything at this point. After the allotted 30-day period, a fire inspector is going to re-inspect your property. And if your property is still in noncompliance, then you get that second notice to abate the fire hazard. That'll be mailed to you. Now, the city will start the process to have your property cleared by a contractor at your expense. So you want to avoid that. Some ask if there is a particular contractor that should be used to clear your property. Well, simply put, the city does not provide a recommendation, nor do we endorse any contractor. So really, it's you as the property owner. It's your responsibility to request the current proof of insurance, if they're bonded, if they have a license, and obtain any other relevant information about that contractor. But we do try to help. So there is a brush clearance contractor list on the website. So what do you do if you feel that the inspector is wrong and that your property is in compliance? And can you file an appeal? Well, the answer is yes. Yes, you can. Visit the LAFD brush website to view the detailed inspection process, and that includes appeals. However, note that a failed inspection will subject you, as the owner, to fees that continue to increase with each failed inspection. All billing is conducted through the city's accounting services section. So if you have questions about that concerning your fees or your invoices or any fees that even could be attached to a tax bill, you should direct those to the source. That's accounting. So you could either call them at 213-978-3424, or you could send an email to lafd brushesaccg@lecity.org. We understand that many people might be worried about their neighbor's property and that they might have a fire hazard because of some overgrown brush. And how would you report that? So first off, we want you to know that the fire department wants to hear your concerns so we can provide the clearance necessary for our firefighters to protect your property and your neighborhood. So you can report a brush fire hazard by email to lafdbrush@lecity.org. Now, please make sure that you include the exact location of the brush hazards, the address. If you have the APN, that would be even better. But of course, you need to put a brief description of what the hazards are and where those hazards are on the property. And of course, it's best not to go looking at those hazards on that neighbor's property without permission. You also can make your complaint by phone. That same phone number we provided before to our brush clearance unit is 1-800-994-4444. And again, we welcome your complaint, but remember, too, that we have limited resources to take your call, and those hours are from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
We have a recently scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.
Here's what's happening in LA this week.
This is LA Current.
This is about all of us. It's about choosing to believe in our city again and proving it with action. And no matter what our city faces, LA never, ever gives up.
LA City's Department of Recreation and Parks invites you to a nature hike with their Urban Ecologist through Ken Malloy Harbor Regional Park. Urban Ecologist Ryan Kinsel will be guiding participants through the unique habitat of this Harbor City Park. The park's Machado Lake is part of SoCal's natural water habitat and home to over 300 species of migratory birds. Enjoy the sights and sounds of native animals and plants at Ken Malloy Harbor Regional Park. Wear comfortable shoes and bring water for this nature hike with Urban Ecologist on Saturday, May 10th at 8:00 AM. Learn more under the Events tab at laparks.org. Saturday, May 10th, is Board Game Day at the Downtown Central Library. Bring your favorite board game and connect with community members at this monthly meetup, which welcomes new and experienced players. Don't worry if you don't have a game. Join a gaming group as it forms, or borrow a game from the library's welcome table in the rotunda. Whether you bluff, strategize, or simply want to roll the dice, join LA's Public Library at the Central Library for Board Game Day on Saturday, May 10th at 12:00 PM. Learn more at lapl.org/events. Mother's Day is coming, and Green Meadows Recreation Center presents its Mother's Day Brunch on Saturday, May 10th. LA City's Department of Recreation Parks and Councilmember Corinne Price are making sure that moms get the honors they deserve at this annual community luncheon. The event will have music, food, entertainment, and an opportunity to celebrate and thank moms and mother figures. The Green Meadows Mother's Day Brunch takes place on Saturday, May 10th, beginning at 10:00 AM. For more information, see the calendar at cd9.lacity.gov. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
The City of Los Angeles Emergency Management Department has opened applications for its 2025 Camp Ready LA program. Now in its third year, the program is for late high school, early college students who are interested in city service and first response, or who've been impacted by a disaster. Camp participants will learn practical skills for many types of emergencies over the four-day program, taking place from July 22nd to July 25th at LA City's Emergency Operations Center. Participants will build connections with other campers and emergency management experts while developing their own community leadership skills. Young Angelinos age 18 to 24 can apply for the 2025 Camp Ready LA program beginning May 1st. For more information, visit emergency.lacity.gov/readyLA. The Los Angeles Police Department Commercial Crimes Division announced the arrest of two people and the recovery of millions of dollars' worth of goods by the Cargo Theft Unit. At storage unit facilities in the San Fernando Valley, detectives recovered over $1.2 million in stolen goods, which included tequila, speakers, clothing, and pet food. A stolen shipment of Bitcoin mining computers valued at $2.7 million was recovered at Los Angeles International Airport just as the computers were about to be loaded onto a flight to Hong Kong. The two arrests followed an extensive investigation in collaboration with Los Angeles Port Police, Union Pacific Police, and the Los Angeles World Airport Police. For more information, visit lapdonline.org. Los Angeles World Airport's Lawa has recognized the winners of the 2024 Friendly Flyer Award Program at Van Nuys Airport. The Friendly Flyer Award Program was established in 2012 and is part of Van Nuys Airport's overall outreach and sustainability efforts. Award winners must have no violations of Lawa's noise abatement and curfew regulation and be in observance of the Quieter Nights Program, avoiding flights between 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. Among the 26 award winners for 2024 are 22 repeat winners and four first-time winners, including ATI Jet, MC Group, OKVS.
Madam Clerk, are we, um, I want to make sure the sergeants have us a thumbs up. Thumbs up, all right, we can go.
Mr. President, shall I call the roll now that council is back in open session, sir?
Please.
Bloomfield, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hut, Gerardo, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Roman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski, 14 members present in the court, Mr. President.
All right, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, with regards to items 44, item 45, and item 46, for which council went into closed session, no action was taken, and thus there is nothing to report. However, on item 44, council does have the option to vote on the substance of that item, the underlying request for the contract, in open session.
Mr. President, shall council vote on item 44 in open session, sir?
Should we open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
14 ayes.
All right.
And Mr. President, for some housekeeping, for the record, motion Harris, Dawson, Hernandez was, is to adopt the building and safety recommendations that were announced at the beginning of the meeting, and also, there is a request to send item 43 forthwith, sir.
All right, without objection on item 43. And the recommendation on the building and safety recommendations, we need to open the roll on that?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fix it. 14 ayes.
All right.
And at this time, sir, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
That clears the desk, sir.
All right, announcements, members. In announcements to the west, to the east, I'll ask everybody in the chamber to rise for adjourning motions. Start on the west side, my left, your right. Any council member, Gerardo?
Thank you, Council President. Today, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Juana Beatriz Gutierrez, a beloved community leader and proud resident of Boyle Heights. Juana was a bold, feisty leader who refused to stay silent in the face of injustice. She inspired everyone around her to take action and speak out. She was born in Sombrerete, Zacatecas, Mexico, the third of seven children, an immigrant who embraced the best of two worlds. Juana was deeply proud to be Mexican and equally proud to have become a U.S. citizen. She loved her adopted home of Boyle Heights. She and her husband Ricardo Jesus Gutierrez built a beautiful family together, raising nine children, and later becoming a grandmother to a whopping 26 grandchildren and a great-grandmother to 13 and with a 14th on the way. I'm joined today by three of her children, Gabrielle Gutierrez, Veronica Gutierrez, and Beatriz Mujaro. Juana's passion for justice was rooted in personal experience. In the late 1950s, her family was displaced not once, but twice due to the construction of the East LA Freeway Interchange. Determined to fight back, Juana became one of the founding members of Las Madres del Este de Los Angeles, the Mothers of East LA, a powerful grassroots movement that successfully stopped the construction of a proposed state prison in one of the city's most underserved neighborhoods. Her efforts and those of other women championed successful fights in support of neighborhoods and schools. Her activism didn't stop there. Alongside other courageous women, Juana helped lead campaigns that blocked the development of toxic waste incinerators, a dump site, a chemical treatment plant, and a hot oil pipeline, all of which would have disproportionately harmed working-class Latino communities. Her work laid the groundwork for what we recognize as the environmental justice movement. To her family, Juana was not only a fierce advocate, but also a source of boundless love, wisdom, and humor. With sharp wit and unflinching honesty, she held those in power accountable and never wavered in her commitment to her community. Juana Beatriz Gutierrez was and will remain a champion of Boyle Heights. Her legacy lives on the lives she touched and the community she helped shape, and she will be deeply missed.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gerardo, and my condolences to the family. You know, as a young staff member who started off her career working at City Hall on the East Side, working for then-councilman Mike Hernandez, I got to work very closely with folks that were such incredibly remarkable grassroots leaders that came out of the East Side. And Juana Gutierrez was one of those very famous, unrelenting civic leaders that showed the strength of what women can do in their community. And I remember meeting her for the first time when Nick Pacheco was running in CD14. Her reputation, well-earned, but remarkable. The collaboration between her and Gloria Molina, they were an unstoppable force with what was able to be accomplished in showing that true grassroots leadership is uncompromisingly strong. And her work was really transformative and left, frankly, a deep imprint on what I knew the strength of our community could be. So I want to really thank you for sharing and imparting her with our city, for her incredible legacy that is one that we are all better for. But when I think about how our community has historically, especially, you know, the Chicano neighborhoods of the East Side, what she stood up and did alongside Gloria with so many other leaders was unprecedented, but showed the force of our voice when we use it really strong and really effectively together. And for that, I'm forever grateful for her legacy, for her leadership, and I thank you for sharing her with us for all those incredible years. She really did transform Los Angeles, particularly on the East Side, but it's something that was an indelible mark for those of us that had aspirations to continue to lead in that kind of leadership. So thank you. May she rest in peace.
Thank you so much. Well said, Councilwoman Rodriguez. And I'd like Councilmember Gerardo to be added to this adjourning motion as well and extend the condolences of this city and the gratitude of this city for the work of Ms. Gutierrez. I didn't ever get as close as Councilwoman Rodriguez, but as a young organizer, we grew up with the two titans, these two women of color, leading the way and really creating the environmental justice movement in this city. And now, both Juana Gutierrez and Juanita Tate, I can imagine them keeping heaven clean and green the way they did here when they were with us in the City of Los Angeles, and gave rise to lots, as you all know, lots of the organizations that we see active today, built their models on the work that she trailblazed in our city. So again, thank you, our condolences, and may she rest in power. Any other adjourning motions on this side of the room? All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.
Folks come forward with their plans, or their architects, or contractors. They can go through that plan check process as quickly as possible, all the parties in one place, and that has led to the speed that we're now seeing. You know, the focus, we know, just looking at experiences from other disasters, we've got to get the debris, debris out. You know, we really can't ramp up the rebuild to the way that we